My chair. I've always been on this one. Through rec and through.
I think I've worked my way there.
Share your screen, new screen. Not one?
Not one you're gonna worry about.
Middle. Uncle switches on.
How did it go?
So we handed out American flags.
Go ahead and search the paint.
Cool. Good job.
It was nice.
Like walking around or?
I think we're gonna.
Like that would be a good idea in the future. That is like, it would just luck over from whatever the real statement on people's law is gonna. It was a good idea.
And then you'll go down.
As long as you're not throwing out poker sticks.
No, no, no. We went, we were there, you know, had 15 minutes and.
So it went pretty good. Yeah, I wish I could have been there. Just family stuff.
We're good to go.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the city council meeting, the special meeting of November 18th. If you'd all please stand and join us in the place of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate that. If we can get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ingle?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan?
Here.
And Mayor Bellinger?
Here. Thank you so much. Starting off with administrative matters, the only one item on our agenda for this evening right now. Conduct interviews of the recreation commission applicants and if the council agrees, to make appointments for the three expiring seats on the recreation commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Yvette is here to do the presentation, but a couple of items first. You will see a new face, or potentially new face for some of you, in staff chair here. Michelle has joined us last week as the new deputy city clerk, so we're happy to introduce her to the council and to the community. This is her first meeting, so she's being accompanied by Diana, who is helping with the transition. So, welcome, Michelle.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The other item I wanted to just mention, it is not specifically stated on the agenda, but we do have opportunity for comments from the public on anything that is not on the written agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Yvette.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Eva Arevalo with the recreation department. Before you, we have the applications received for the three vacancies on the recreation commission seats that expired for November 2024. As you may recall, the city council scheduled interviews for these vacancies on November 4th, 2024, for today. A little bit of the application process. The application period ran from September 25th to October 24th of 2024. The vacancy notice was published in the Escolon Times on September 25th, and it was posted weekly on the city's website and Facebook page during the application period. Additionally, we sent notice, notices via email to all our registered users on our registration site, which is about 1,700 registered email addresses, and these emails were sent on September 25th, October 16th, and October 22nd of 2024. We received four applications for these three vacancies. The applicants are Dan Bauer, Michael Becker, Stephanie Hogan, and Matthew Showalter. A copy of each of the applicant's materials is included for you all to review. As per section 2.17.020 of the Escolon municipal code, the recreation commission consists of five members. All members must be registered in the San Joaquin County and must reside within the Escolon Unified School District. Most importantly, of these, of the five members, at least three must live within the Escolon city limits. Currently, one city, once a city member lives outside the city limits, we have two applicants that also live outside city limits. They are Stephanie Hogan and Matthew Showalter. This means that the council can only appoint one of these applicants. With this in mind, staff is requesting that the council review and conduct interviews with the applicants, and if council agrees, make appointments for the three, exists, three expiring seats on the commission. We received confirmation from all four applicants that they will be present at today's meeting to answer any questions the council may have. All four are here, and staff is also available to assist with any questions. Thank you.
Can I, just to reiterate, so you're saying that by default, then the others basically would be in, is what you're saying? And so, in other words, we're picking between two people? Okay, 'cause there's only four applicants.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I don't want to paint it as automatic. I still think it's up to council discretion, but typically, yes, if we receive under the number of applicants as we have seats, those have generally been treated as automatic, and so in this case.
Assuming they're passing fingerprints and all and stuff. I just, just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Ask a question?
Please.
Yvette, how long are these appointments for?
They range, I don't know the exact timeframes. I think they're. Two years.
I thought there were three?
Three.
Three years.
I won't have it in front of me, and my memory is not best, but I.
That sounds right.
It'll expire November 2027.
Sounds like three.
Thank you.
So before we do that, then, as a council, are we looking to just move forward with the two folks that are in the Escolon state limits, or do we like to do interviews on the floor?
I think we should just do the process.
Yeah.
Then, just by default, then, the first applicant that I see in the packet here is Dan Bauer. If you could come to the podium, please. I guess he has a quick synopsis. Tell us about yourself for anybody who's listening out there in the world, and then we'll throw some questions at you, maybe.
All right. My name is Dan Bauer. I work for Manticu Unified School District. I'm the varsity, head varsity baseball coach at East Union High School. I've been involved in youth sports for the past 20 years. I have two sons. My eldest son, Jacob, went to, played college basketball. My youngest son, Isaac, played football in high school, so I saw both ends of the spectrum type thing. Super competitive and kind of relaxed, been part of the Escolon recreation stuff since 15, 16 years, from coaching to whatever else people need help with when I need to know about it. Married, three kids. That's about it.
Okay. Questions? Who's gonna start off tonight with questions? Volunteers up here? Throw some questions out?
Sure.
Oh, please, down at the other end.
Go ahead, Mr. Strowman.
So, Dan, your application, obviously, you're really heavy into sports, but how do you think the rec program can benefit all Escolonians, not just in sports?
I think it benefits everybody, all Escolonians, because it, if it's rainright, it's, parents give pride and joy seeing their kids participate in, in team sports, and I think being part of a team is a crucial thing for kids to learn at a young age, how to work together as a team, and just working together in competition. I think competition is amazing, done in the right way, and I think parents can enjoy themselves on a Saturday or a Friday night, whatever it is, if it's done the right way.
I guess I didn't ask the question right. My question was, for those Escolonians that aren't into sports, how do you see the rec commission providing programs for those individuals, both youth and adults?
Well, if you're not into sports, I get, there's other things the rec commission can get involved with, like city outreach. I'm assuming the library has things, that there's things to go with. Not sure about adults. I didn't know there was rec stuff for adults. Well, there's softball, but.
Karate.
What's that?
And karate. We do have a karate program as well, and a yoga program.
That's new this year, I think, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Those are all sports as well.
Just, I, I think with adults, getting the information out, like, I didn't know about that. I've been a resident here for a long time. Like, so I guess more information out to the public is probably key.
More questions here?
I got just one.
Go for it.
So, when I look at growing up and look at generation that I grew up in and prior, and then generations after, it's become clear that, you know, there's a fine line when you're teaching, like, winning and losing and stuff like that, but, you know, how do you see, you know, moving forward with winning and losing and that whole concept of, like, giving trophies and stuff?
So I think trophies are earned. That's just my opinion on it. I think the harder you work at something, you should be rewarded for it, but I also believe that, in the spirit of competition, I think if both teams put it out there, there's gonna be a clerk-up winner and loser, just like there's in life, but there's a way you can, I guess, be more gentle with the kids who, who, who weren't successful, if that makes sense, as opposed to back in the day, I know when, you know, if I was to lose something, it was, take your ball and get out of here, and it's like, hmm, well, you know, you can kind of help them out, like, well, if you would have done this right, this could have happened, or that would have helped you out win there. I think when it comes to sports, I think it's crucial to teach kids and adults, the only two things you can control is your attitude and effort. If your attitude is great and your effort is 100%, and that's it, you can't control anything else. You can't control if the other guy's taller, faster, better. The refs, umpires make a good, bad call. If it's raining, call, you can't control any of that. Just your attitude and effort, that's all you can control.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan?
I'm gonna just make sure I'm asking everybody the same question, so I'll come at you with one of these questions here. What do you believe are the most significant challenges currently facing the city of Escolon in terms of its parks and recreation? And if appointed, what specific goals would you like commission to focus on to address these challenges?
One of the things I think that is a challenge is getting the word out about all the different things that you guys offer, that the rec department does have to offer, 'cause it's, it's, to be perfectly honest, I didn't know anything about any of this until probably four months ago, when the baseball, all that information went public with baseball. Like, there's a lot of people in the community that are big into sports, but don't know how to go about trying to help out in certain ways, so I think that'd be a big deal, in my opinion, with the rec commission, if we could get the word out about all these different things, whether, however that is. That'd be a massive thing. And then, I think competitive balance is huge, like, in all sports across the way. I've, I've, my daughter played rec basketball probably four years ago, and I had all girls on my team, and we played all-boys teams, and we got annihilated every single time. It just, it wasn't fun. The girls, you know, I made it fun for them, but it was irritating to me as an adult, like, really? This is, this is what we're doing? You know, then, it just wasn't, it wasn't ran, in my opinion, the best way it could have been. It wasn't, like, my daughter got nothing out of it. That was the last time she played hoops. So that's what I don't want to see happen again.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure. The recreation commission meets the first Wednesday of the month at 6:30. Attendance is super important. Do you have any other commitments that would impede your ability to make meetings regularly?
Only part I would have a hard time is during high school baseball season, we play baseball games on Wednesdays at 4 o'clock, so that would be two months out of the year. That would be tough for me, but we play, our league games are on Wednesday nights, and that's for six weeks, so other than that, the random preseason game here or there might come up, but baseball, high school baseball, we're doing good. It's like three months that's going to the state and everything, but on the average, it's about two months. But, like, 6:30, games start at 4:00. They're usually done by 6:00. You know, I can probably slide out, have my assistants help clean up the field and whatnot, and be here right, probably right about 6:30, if not a couple minutes later.
Or just for the one, just for the one?
Yeah, just be the one baseballs during the season, yeah.
Like, you could commit, commit to that, making every meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Other than that, I'd be, no problem.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Next up, Michael Becker, please. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on rec commission, and we'll throw some questions at you.
My name is Mike Becker. My wife and I moved down here from Sacramento about six years ago. I have two daughters. I've been into sports my whole life. I've played baseball 30-plus years. It's probably my main sport. I've played other sports. I've coached a little bit with the high, with my old high school team. I've coached a little bit at Ripon High. I helped our JV team in college. I played in college, junior college, and a four-year college in Nebraska. I played a few years of semi-pro, one year in Europe, in the Czech Republic, and I helped coach some of the smaller kids there. So, I mean, I've, I have knowledge working with kids and coaching and teaching the game and other sports as well, so I feel fairly comfortable in that aspect.
Questions? Who's gonna start off this?
I guess I'll just ask the same question. What are your feelings as far as, you know, trophies and, and, you know, teaching that fine balance of winning and losing?
I feel the same, Mr. Bauer said. I, you know, I believe the ones that deserve trophies should get trophies. If, you know, that's, I feel like it's the whole point of competition, is you're teaching kids to be competitive, 'cause when you go into life, life's competitive. When you have a job, you know, you, you want to move up, you gotta work hard to get that position. So if you want to get better and win the trophies and win the championships, you, it's, it'll help you learn and understand that. It's not just, oh, hey, we're just playing. I mean, yes, it's supposed to be fun, supposed to, you know, have fun with it, but also it teaches you to be competitive and to understand to still work hard towards something, have a goal to work towards.
Thank you.
So I, as I asked Mr. Bauer, what types of programs outside of sports do you think the rec could expand to, to offer programs to all Escolonians, not just those that are involved in sports?
I mean, I feel like there could be a lot of different things. I mean, I'm, like, I've only been here six years, so I don't know everything that has gone on in the past or stuff you guys have had, but, I mean, besides sports, I feel like there's probably many different things you guys can do. We used to have the karate stuff, but that's part of the sports, but just any kind of events, just events that everyone could be a part of. I know you guys do all, like, the parade stuff, and that's amazing, getting people part of that. My lack of knowledge of how everything works here, so I've been here so long, but.
What do you believe is the most significant challenges currently facing the city of Escolon in terms of parks, parks and recreation? And if pointed, what specific goals would you like the commission to focus on to address these challenges?
From what I've heard or just read here and there, there's a lot of kids wanting to go play other places in the sports, and I feel like if I was one of the appointees, I feel like I would want to, I don't know, change, and change some things, add some things to make it more exciting and make it more that the kids want it more here, instead of going somewhere else to find it. Make it more exciting, more extravagant, however you want to say it, like, just to keep them here and wanting to play here, instead of going other places.
Thank you.
Hi. The rec commission meets the first Wednesday of the month at 6:30. Is there anything in your schedule that would prevent you from being able to attend meetings regularly?
Not at all.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Next up, we have Stephanie Hogan, please, if you could come to the podium. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on rec commission.
My name's Stephanie Hogan. I'm a lifelong Escolon resident, except for a short stint in college. I've spent most of my life here in Escolon. I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse for 11 years, working at a local hospital, doing head trauma, stroke care, et cetera. And most importantly, I'm a parent who lives in this community. My children access rec sports, and it fostered a sense of volunteerism within me, made me want to come here and join and apply.
Questions? Who's gonna start off tonight?
Thanks for coming in. Same kind of question, I guess, is what are your thoughts as far as that fine balance with, you know, winning and losing and, and teaching that philosophy with, through the use of trophies?
I picture rec sports in general as creating community through activity. I think that everyone can have different opinions, have different activities, different things they like to do, but it brings all of us together in one place, enjoying lifting up our youth and creating that strong bond in an environment that Escolon's lucky to have. So with that being said, I don't think that trophies are everything, I'll just be totally honest. I think it's a wonderful thing to offer the trophy ceremonies. I don't know if I've seen that before, for example, in softball, but I don't think it's the sole focus, right? The point is to have people from different areas, whether it's kids from Van Allen, kids from Dent, kids from Farmington or whatever, getting together, parents getting together, getting to know each other, and creates that common sense of unity and respect. For me, that's the real trophy. That's the purpose of, of rec sports.
Thank you.
Everybody's looking at this way, so I guess I'll go. So, what types of programs beside sports do you see the rec program expanding for those youth and seniors that aren't necessarily into sports?
Variety of different things I feel like can be offered at the existing buildings and areas that we have, like community center, acknowledging that it's limited space, limited parking. I think it'd be wonderful to offer more pro, programs where people could get together and do, for example, art, music, meditation. I know that yoga's already offered, meditation. Another faucet of the community that maybe would be interested in basic life support training. I'm very passionate about BLS, and I feel like that's something that could be offered. I feel like at one point it was, including babysitter classes through rec, and I feel like that'd be a wonderful thing to bring back, and I could help bridge that.
Thank you.
What do you believe is the most significant challenges currently facing the city of Escolon in terms of parks and recreation? And if appointed, what specific goals would you like the commission to focus on to address these challenges?
Really excited about this question.
What's that?
I'm really excited about this question.
I agree.
I feel like the biggest challenges, and I'll just list them, and not all of them are quick wins, and I acknowledge that not all of them can be solved, but one of the biggest things is keeping rec sports equitable, not just in cost, but in ability, knowing that some kids can enroll, their families can afford that one-time cost, but then there's a secondary issue of supplies, of, let's say it's soccer cleats or balls and bats and different things that they can use to recreate at home as well, so they can continue to practice. I kind of pictured there being an opportunity to have some sort of equipment amnesty, where people that are maybe doing one-time use of or moderately used equipment can return them to some sort of drop-off space. We can make sure they're clean, make sure they're disinfected, and then put them back into our stock of stuff that we could use for the community. I know just as a mom of a kid who decided they did not want to play a sport after playing one season, it was like, okay, well, now what am I gonna do with these, these cleats and trying to rehome them and find a space for them? I thought it would be a great way to give back. So again, keeping it equitable. The next is space. This isn't one I can solve, right, but it's a limited space area, the community center, the sporting fields out there, et cetera, all the different areas kids can practice. It's not an easy solution, but I think that'd be something that we could discuss on the board, just finding other places to home people for practice. And the last one is just getting the word out. I know, like, the other candidates mentioned, it's difficult to get the word out to everyone, and that's kind of an impossible benchmark, but trying to get information out to more people would be something I'd be very interested in, whether it's emailing out biannual surveys, saying, hey, we want your opinion, here's your biannual survey, you know, pipe in here and tell us how you feel about the rec program, or going out and, you know, putting flyers up at various locations. I'd be more than willing to volunteer my time to do that.
Thank you.
Very good. The rec commission meets on the first Wednesday of the month at 6:30. Is there anything in your schedule that would prevent you from being able to attend meetings regularly?
I, for the most part, I work per diem at the hospital currently, and so I maintain a very regimented schedule. I work every Tuesday and then some weekends, so it keeps my schedule pretty.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. French? Since Ms., Ms. Hogan and Mr. Showalter are candidates, can I ask an additional question?
Sure. As long as, yeah, as long as it's consistent with both.
Yes, it'll be to both Ms. Hogan and Mr. Showalter.
Yeah.
So knowing that the rec commission is an advisory body to the council, what's your perception of being a rec commissioner in relation to us as the council, staff, and the community at large?
I believe that we play, if you look at the umbrellas, we play a middle ground. So we are, it's a two-way street, right? We provide information to you based on things that the rec committee will see fit. For example, with the baseball program that was required to come here, be discussed at the community at large and with the city council. I also see a top-down avenue, where you would find something that was brought to your attention that would be required to be discussed by us, and then information passed back on after we discuss it. Kind of, if it's okay, can I give an example?
Sure.
On that topic, I was thinking about another service avenue, would having a more transparent communication and reporting line, whether it be an email that goes to, hey, straight to the rec commission, hey, I experienced this situation out at the park today. An example would be that, I think at one point, there was an aggressive dog, right, that was out there, and having this response line where we could get information and say, okay, I might not have the answer for you right now, but I'm gonna get back to you. Let me take that to the next person, whether it be city council or whoever we would have to get in touch with, and having a more transparent reporting line.
Thanks. Next up, Matthews Showalter, please.
Good evening, council. Can I give a?
Go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on council.
Yeah, so Matt Showalter, I've been in Escolon since 2006, have a four-year-old, seven-year-old, and 10-year-old, who are all in recreational sports through the city. Traveled for work for the last 15 years, and this is really the first opportunity that I've had, a little bit more flexibility in my schedule, which is what's leading me to try to get more involved with the rec commission and then ultimately coaching as well.
Questions?
I guess I'll start off. What are, what are your thoughts on teaching that, you know, balance of winning and losing and, and the idea of trophies in youth sports?
Yeah, I think in youth sports, it's more of a developmental program, getting a skillset for the kids that sets them up for success as they move into the middle school and high school years. So I like the achievement awards that the city currently gives out. I think that if the kids are coming and they're putting in effort and they're willing to learn, I like the, that they get recognized for putting in that effort and, and being there ready to perform or want to learn. I think that from a trophy standpoint, not a older generation, I guess, I'm not that old, but older generation, like, we didn't get participation medals, and so if my kids do get them, not overly like, hey, good job for getting a participation award. I think that should be reserved more for the competitive group, that I, I think it's different than what we're talking about within the rec league versus more competitive travel leagues.
Thank you.
I guess it's my turn again.
Yep.
What types of programs besides sports do you think that rec can expand to for those youth and? youth and adults that don't necessarily, aren't involved in sports?
Yeah, so I kind of outlined high level, um, what I would look to do, um, and just some ideas from talking to other parents in different cities and where I grew up. And so I think that there's, uh, an opportunity for like special type events, um, whether it's holidays or there's things that the city can do that's outside of sport-related. Um, I think that there's preschool programs, there's a lot of, I mean, up-and-coming kids that, my four-year-old, this is the first year that she's been able to do basketball and, and, um, softball in the spring. And I think there's an opportunity to, to not just athletic programs, but programs that we could look at in general for kids that are between two and five. Um, from the adult standpoint, I think that there's, we have the more athletic programs with yoga and, and karate. I think that there's gonna be an opportunity, both age groups, um, whether it's culinary, I, I saw that we have a kitchen in the community center. Um, I don't know how often that gets utilized, but, um, whether it's culinary, whether it's fitness, music, dance, there's broad stroke, lots of different programs that we could look at. I think the challenge will be finding the people that are experts in those, uh, programs and getting them to, to teach them.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so what do you believe are the most significant challenges currently facing the city of Escalon in terms of parks and recreation? And if appointed, what specific goals would you like the commission to focus on to address these challenges?
Yeah, so, um, really the, the first page, there was four different groups that I kind of broke down, where I think, um, evaluating and enhancing our existing programs. I think that we do a, a good job offering a, a broad stroke of activities. Uh, I think that there's an opportunity to support the parents and coaches better than we do today. Um, it seems like we have the same parents that coach multiple sports year in and a year out, and so I think that that'd be an opportunity for us to improve is giving some tools, um, maybe are in place today, but communicating those tools to additional parents that they have additional resources other than just winging it the first day of practice. Um, as far as proposing new programs, I think that having a ten-year-old that didn't like softball, loves dance, I saw that we, we passed the dance classes at the community center at the last, uh, meeting, so I think that'll be a benefit. Um, and then continuing to expand would be an opportunity within, um, the Rec Commission or city council. And then participation, so, um, I Googled it, so I don't know if it's accurate numbers, but roughly thirty-eight percent of the kids that go to school within Escalon Unified aren't on the active list to get an email, so, uh, I think that's an opportunity there from a marketing standpoint, to make sure that all the parents and all the kids are aware of the programs that are available within the city.
Thank you.
Rec Commission meets at 6:30, first mon-, uh, first Wednesday of the month. Is there anything in your schedule that would prohibit you from being able to attend regularly?
Long-term, no. December, uh, that first Wednesday, I do have a, a work commitment in Florida, but, um, if I have, and I have enough notice that I can schedule my business trips around not being Wednesdays.
In the foreseeable future, just the one potential conflict?
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, one more?
More.
One more.
Thank you. So knowing that the Rec Commission is an advisory bor-, body to the council, what is your perception of a rec commissioner in relation to the council, staff, and the community at large?
Yeah, I think, um, being a rec commissioner, it's, it's being an advocate for the city. Um, in the business side, I, we call it the right seat on the bus, and so you, you guys are driving the bus, um, we just have a seat on it, and I think that if we can help, support, and advocate, and bring ideas and, and help do some of the groundwork to propose programs to the city, that that's gonna be the biggest benefit. I think, uh, you guys have enough on your plate, and drumming up programs for youth sports doesn't, doesn't really need to be a priority for you guys when you have a commission that should be doing that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Thank you.
The next question is, is what would we like to do for nominations at this point?
So, I do feel like it's unfortunate that it falls in this way, that it's really between two out of the four, instead of picking three at large. This is per code, is this correct? So it would take several meetings to change the code, or would there be able to make concessions from here? Are we able to go and make a different choice and include three outside city limits instead of two outside city limits?
Yeah, code is, um, changed through ordinance, and so it takes two meetings of the council to, um, change ordinance, amend the code. So it would, you'd have to pause the effort here, go do a, an ordinance amendment, approve that to, to modify the rules, and then sort of reset this, this interview process, and pardon my cough.
Are there any upcoming extreme deadlines that the current Rec Commission has to make? Anything super timely besides baseball and, and softball registration?
Excuse me. The commission's efforts are, they, they've satisfied their efforts there. It's now under staff's hands on the baseball, softball. There's nothing pressing coming up, um, in the Recreation Commission that I recall.
If, I don't know how it's going now, because we have a shift in baseball, softball program. Uh, I do know that in past seasons, there was a mandatory, um, y-, you had to come to the January meeting if you wanted a child moved up in rank, that was a thing you had to attend. Do you know if we are doing, maintaining that?
No, especially with the kind of change, um, there, and it, it's been encouraged, but it hasn't been absolutely mandatory. We've had many requests to move up that have not been able to attend, um, you know, and we've sort of administratively done that. So I, I wouldn't say that would be an issue that would preclude any sort of action here.
So are we moving forward or?
I'd, I'd really like to put off and, and, um, go through the process. I, I really think that our two out of, uh, ci-, city limit applicants would be a great addition. Um, it'd be a shame to leave one of them out.
What are you, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Melinda.
No, no, I thought you were done. Continue.
I can, I can be done, that, that's just my thought, that's, that's what I was like.
I'm kidding.
So you, so you thinking, uh, tabling it until we can?
Yep, get it back on the agenda, get it switched, figure out the correct wording to be able to have three, um, get through the two meetings.
Would this affect any of the applicants at all, in a negative way? No? Okay.
May I share some thoughts?
Please.
Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to Matthew and Stephanie. Um, it's very obvious to me that you've done your homework. And, um, if the decision of the council is made to table this decision, um, I would strongly encourage you to not give up, um, because it's very obvious to me what I feel both of you could bring to the Rec Commission.
Yeah, I, uh, whatever our decision, I, I would feel like it's unfortunate to have to pick from the four, pick between the two of you. If we do go forward in that and have to pick between the two of you, I do hope the other candidate does come back on the next time around and continues to contribute to the city. Um, thank you for coming out, thank you for being interested, and thank you for continuing to support the city of Escalon, and I really appreciate that. Um, that said, I do suggest that we table this and move forward with, uh, editing the code to allow for three members to be outside of city limits.
Send a motion.
I'll make a motion, you do what Melinda just said.
I will second that motion.
So we have a motion to amend code specifically to allow three out of city within EU SD boundaries.
Nice to conduct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries five zero. As this is a city council meeting, I, it's not on the agenda, but we do have the ability to open this up for matters presented from the audience. So now is your opportunity, if there's something not on the agenda you'd like to bring up and bring to the podium, you're more than welcome to do so. Not saying grand volunteers, anybody online. All right, then we can go ahead and amend, uh, adjourn this meeting, and we'll see you at the next city council meet on the second, I believe?
Second.
December second, thank you.
I'm feeling sort of everything up.